I have a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call in.
Council President Stieretz.
Here.
Council Schneider.
Here.
Council Stickley.
Here.
Council Chamberlain.
Here.
Council Stieretz.
Here.
And Council Fry.
Here.
All members are present. We have a forum.
Council has had time to read the prior meeting's minutes. Does anyone have a motion to approve?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the prior meetings but is moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Fry. Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Stieretz?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President here.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
And we had no one coming forward to be put on the agenda today, so we will move forward with our committee reports. We'll start with our tree commission.
Tree commission met on December 12th. Kim Bowles had submitted our Tree City USA application along with a growth award. We, I did notice in an email that the Tree City USA application was approved, but haven't heard any word on our growth award. Kim has also, Kim Bowles had sent a, a letter to the expositor, or an article to the expositor on the value of trees. I'm not sure when that's going to be coming out. Pete Carr had committed, had reported that they've been out there to get rid of all the invasive species, the barberry, the honeysuckle, and the auto olive. Had sprayed them in the spring. They're going to spray them again, try to get rid of all those. Also, they took a bunch of grapevine down out there. They were suggesting putting up a sign at the entrance of the one woods. And they'd also suggested maybe putting a couple benches in the south woods. They elected me as the new chairman for the coming year. And after our meeting, we went out and planted 40 trees in the north and the south woods.
Any questions at all for Rick? So we need a motion to approve.
I don't think he had any recommendations. I didn't.
Okay, they didn't, they didn't vote to okay the signs?
No.
That you just discussed it?
That's going to be part of the grant money or something like that.
Okay.
But they haven't come up with a, a design or anything like that yet.
All right, just discussion right now.
Or amount.
Great. All righty. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Let's see. We have finance. Busy, busy, busy people.
Yeah, Finance Committee, I'm going to read this so I don't miss anything. Convened at noon on Friday with Chief Torbit, Chief Sluter, Dennis Richardson, Robin Schatz, Jamie Giger, Shane Chamberlain, Jeff Stieretz, and myself. And we began the meeting with questions for Chief Torbit. We asked his changes in the wages and benefit line items and capital requests. He indicated Jamie Giger asked for the benefit amount to be decreased based on current year expenses. He also mentioned that he would like to replace a cruiser, and he is requesting grant money for more citywide cameras. He will be using the drug seizure fund to refurnish the patrolman's office. Committee then asked Chief Sluter about the changes to the fire department wages. He indicated that he is asking for an increase to keep the full-time employees he has. He would like to increase wages to be more comfortable with surrounding communities for employee retention. Committee also recommended to remove administrative assistant from the wages description. Rick also indicated that the capital improvements requested for Medic 85 were approved in 2018 but were not spent. He would like to keep the amount in budgeted for potential use in 2019. He also indicated that the hospitals in need of these types of transports. The committee asked about the bike patrol. Chief Sluter said it would be used similar to the police bike patrol in high-traffic areas such as the Wausau Homecoming or Fulton County Fair. Jamie Giger also stated personnel, our personal protective gear includes carry forward of prior year's unused funds for firemen's turnout gear. The chief has requested $34,000 each year for personal protective gear to maintain equipment as required by the state. Next, the committee reviewed the public service budget items with Dennis Richardson. Shane Chamberlain requested the recreation wages because council has no oversight of the recreation program. It was suggested that the WRA pay a portion of the salaries for the recreation department or the city oversees the program. There was also discussion regarding the pool budget. The committee asked if attendance fees were high enough and whether hot food could be sold in the concession stand. Based on current year expenses, the pool budget was decreased in 2019. Dennis indicated the trails budget was able to be decreased for 2019. The committee agreed to increase the budget to purchase trees by $1,000 in 2019 to help keep the Tree City USA recognition. The committee asked Dennis about the increases on his wages and benefits in the three funds that he has paid from. He indicated he is looking to retire in 2019 and has allowed for the payout of his second vacation time. He also explained that ODOT do not request the funds budgeted in the streets and state highway funds in 2018. Those amounts budgeted again in 2019. We will be responsible for 20% of the, of the project and engineering fees. There were several changes to the public capital requests as well. The committee approved all capital items presented. There was clarification that the paving amount for Biddle is to finish the paving and strike parking lots as well. And the new sidewalk to be installed is on Leggett Street, not Linfoot Street. Next, the committee reviewed and approved the water and water reclamation fund request. Committee then reviewed the remaining budget with the finance director and approved all other budget items. They requested to review the council fees through the year as that line item has steadily increased over the past couple years. With no further discussion, the committee approved the budget as presented and recommended the ordinance be presented at the special council meeting to be scheduled before the end of 2018. With a motion by Jeff Stieretz and seconded by Steve Schneider, all were in favor. The committee then discussed the mayor's recommendation to cover one-half of dental premium for all full-time employees. The cost to cover one-half of employees' premium would be about $47 per family enrolled. The maximum exposure to the city would be about $23,000. Jamie Giger explained that not every employee will enroll in dental insurance, and the expense would be allocated across the several funds that cover wages and benefits and would not negatively affect just one fund. Shane Chamberlain moved to recommend that council agree to pay half the dental premium for all full-time employees that chose to enroll in dental coverage. And the meeting was adjourned at 2:54. So if anybody has any questions, we covered a lot of stuff that day. We were moving.
I do have one question I meant to ask that day, Rick. That was bikes. Is that one or two or three?
You say bikes?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't hear. I'm sorry. At those times, that's one bike with the equipment.
One bike with the, okay. I meant to ask that day and I forgot.
And I think just one point of clarification for the fellow members. When Steve mentioned that council fees have continued to increase, it's legal council fees, not our fees.
Although I think those have gone up a little bit.
And also, there was a discussion about the Wausau Rec Association and paying for... Well, we'd like to, I thought we were going to bring something up. We'd like to have some sort of a...
Maybe something in new business.
Yeah, where we get something arranged with them where we have a little more oversight than just being on the committee but not having a vote or, you know, and also some sort of payout back to the city to cover taking care of the fields and lights and things like that when they can run tournaments.
Right. I think council, didn't we agree to this already about the payout for the lights and stuff? I thought we agreed to move forward with that and also to have one person represent council at the WRA meetings. But it's never, we've never voted on that. I think you all brought it forward.
Well, and the one person would not have a, I don't think they would have a voting position. They would just be there.
They would represent council to go down, like we do for parks.
Right, but...
It would be the same thing.
But I think there's, I think council needs to have some oversight and some voting on what things are being done, how they're being done. Because if, if not, then...
And that's only one person voting. It still would have to come back to council, let council vote, and then that person go back down and make that vote on something that would do, I think, with financing of that committee and stuff like that. That's why the park board is set up the way it is. From what I understood, when I was on the park board and recreation, I felt the same way. Council should have more say on certain things. And they said when it came to financing and things, you still needed council's approval on those and not just that one council person sitting on there making that decision. You need all of council to make the decisions for those, because that is grounds, that is finance, and, and actually wages and things like that. I agree, somebody should be down there. I don't know how, council would like to make that work. I feel council needs to be represented down at the Wausau Recreation. I think actually Wausau Recreation wants this as well. As well, if it being a voting person, I don't know if we can do that. Tom, I think that's something that I was told we couldn't because I, you know, you, you can't vote, you can't vote. I was told on both boards that I sat on, and that was the reason why. So...
Well, myself, I think a good place to start would be, I hate to say this, I'm embarrassed because I cannot think of his name.
Mark?
Mark.
Yeah, he needs to be presented.
I'd like to get a man here at next council hall meeting, you know, to talk and say what his plans are, see what his, and then, you know, we can start there. That way, we can figure out when they put on a tournament, what the city should get.
Actually, I think when Dennis and I agree with that...
Where are we at with the WRA agreement and the city?
Well, we had two of them resigned, and they were looking to get the president and the vice president.
I think they were...
No, the treasurer. Treasurer.
Right.
To be placed. And that's kind of what we were waiting on, is to get them in place so that we could all meet and have this meeting as a full body of representatives. And I've asked a couple of times if they have found anybody, and at the times that I've asked, they had not. So I agree with you, maybe with Dennis, Mark, we can at least get started on something that he feels that the board does have to be presented, you know, or has to be present so that they can agree that. Talking with them prior to them resigning and talking with Mark, I think they're all on board with having a council representative. But as far as the one vote down there, I don't know. We can't do it in parks.
I think we have to have something going though, because you're talking, spring's going to be rolling around, and all the tournaments are coming. We have to have some sort of a...
I used to bring back minutes. When I sat on the recreation, I brought back, we brought back minutes. And those were always brought back to every council meeting. And I agree with you, maybe we should have Mark up here so he can give those. I mean, I think that's a great idea. So all that stuff, I agree, needs to be done, but we need to move forward and say, this is what we want to do. And if they can't maybe get their board together, they're going to have to send a representative who's sitting on that board.
So Chad and Dave resigned?
Yes.
Okay.
So when's the next council hall meeting?
The third.
Yeah. Well, we see if we can get Mark here and we can see what his game plan is. That way, we can get together and we more or less tell the rec department, you know, this is what, you know...
On the third?
Sounds okay to you?
Second work for you?
We might not be out of here quite at 8:30, but...
Need to get started.
Or we can start a little earlier, too.
We need to get started on this, right?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Two things to keep in mind. What is it, I think, while Mark is the employee of the city who runs the rec department, the WRA is currently its own self. It's a, it's a nonprofit corporation. And I think, you know, he needs to lead them, but they need to be gathering and getting their officers appointed and so that they and Mark can review the regs that we've sort of helped them out with and proposed. I guess the other thing, I would just urge a note of caution that the operation of the rec department, while funded and overseen, the funding overseen by council is actually the duty and responsibility of the mayor. And to have someone sitting on the WRA with authority in essence to help direct that path, I guess is something that we need to consider closely, because you've kind of got to, I use that term separation of powers. But you would have council in not only deciding on the monetary contribution and support of that, but also making decisions on behalf of them. Just suggesting that's something that...
Parallels with the chamber. I can't vote on the chamber as well.
Right, but like Kathy...
Finance that, too.
As the mayor also said, when she sat on the board, she couldn't vote, but she brought minutes back, too.
I did.
Well, I'm not sugge, yeah, I'm talking about having an official vote.
The minutes that I brought back were made by, by the park director at the time at the meeting, who ran the meeting. And whether it be from the president, whether it be from the park director at that time, bringing back the minutes from that council person, at least everybody was on board, but we could do that.
Right now, we bring back minutes from the park department, park meeting.
Right, same way.
So there'd be no difference between bringing back from the rec department.
And the minutes were...
No, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I agree with that. I guess what I'm, whether it's a voting or non-voting position.
Right.
Right.
I think definitely the...
Because I questioned it when I was on it right away, why, why I'm not a voting member on that. And then I found out the chamber is the same way, and park board is the same way, and things like that.
But the, the big difference when comparing the WRA to the park board is that the park board submits recommendations to council for approval.
Right.
Exactly.
Because they are part of the city.
Whereas the WRA...
They are a board of the city.
So we don't, that, so we have some influence within the park board, but we don't have any influence in the WRA?
Well, that's why I'm saying if we have Mark up here, he can say, okay, you know, he feels when they put on a tournament, it's going to cost us much for the fields. We can say, yes, is that enough?
Right.
No, that's not enough. So really, we can make it to where we have say over the WRA, you know. I think we can.
I think we can, too, yeah. Could we start that meeting at 7:30 instead of 7:45? Because you said you thought it'd take longer. Council, the whole meeting in the third or not? I don't know.
I'm not early person.
I mean, I'm just, you said you thought it'd take longer.
I could be your right answer.
Are you guys, if anybody, Dennis, can you be here by 7:30?
I get up at 5:00, go to the bathroom, and I can go on.
That doesn't need to be on. Okay, we, so everybody's good with the third? Have Mark here, and you want a representative from WRA here as well?
I don't know as well. We need one quite, yeah. I can say let's go with Mark first and see.
But maybe we can get an idea where they're at, too, as far as a board. Let's, if you guys suggest we question Mark, that's all you want?
I mean, take one mark in there or on the rec board.
Rec board.
I would think they would be.
Yeah, but they're, they're with the...
They're hired by the city.
Yeah, but what Tom has drafted, Tom Waters has drafted, gives them no ability to influence the WRA's decisions. They're a non-voting member as well.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
But they enforce whatever is, is put in place. And if we put a representative down there, if they can voice, they just can't vote. They can't vote.
Myself, the first time, I'd rather just see Mark myself, but it's up to you guys.
No, that's fine.
You know, what, you know, what the rest of you decide. If you'd rather have both. But myself, I'd rather just see Mark's first time.
Just Mark?
Yeah.
That's whatever, you know, what you have, Shane.
I think he could probably speak more on the rec board. I mean, I think he's going to understand what the rec department's...
Costs, what's going out, things like that.
Just, just, I mean...
As far as Jamie, too, for bills.
That's a place to start.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the finance committee meetings?
I'd make a motion to accept the finance committee's recommendation.
Second.
Motion to accept the finance committee recommendation moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stickley. Council Chamberlain?
Andrea, just one thing I wanted to point out to my fellow council members that you probably are still looking through the budget. We won't actually vote on the budget until a special council meeting, right, Jamie?
Yeah.
So you still have opportunities to dug through it and ask questions.
This is just the finance.
That's okay.
Just, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Further clarify, are there two issues that were approved by the finance committee? One is to approve the proposed budget. The other is to provide for payment of one-half of the dental insurance premiums. So there's actually two aspects to the recommendation.
As is drafted, as presented as one.
That's fine. I mean, if you guys are okay with doing that as one.
Okay. Motion to accept the finance committee recommendations moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stickley. Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stieretz?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
And Council Stieretz.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
I just want to say, administration, thank you very much for getting your budgets in and working diligently with council on this. I think you guys did an amazing job this year. Thank you very much for that. I know it's not your favorite coming year, as it isn't. Everyone else is here, so...
Dennis looks forward to it every year.
I know he does. So I, I just appreciate the time and council as well for working on it. It's not done, but at least we're moving forward on it. That's a good thing. And finance committee as well, taking the time. Okay, so that's done. We'll move on to our department head reports.
Nothing real new with the fire department this week. We're spending evenings over at the depot with Santa Claus for the Rotary, helping usher in Santa Claus visiting this week. Other than that, nothing really to report.
I have a trivia question on that. When did they get rid of the candy, the, the fire department, to what they go to now, the bags? I'm going back, I know.
We have, we haven't done that in probably 15 or 20 years.
It's been a long time.
We have fruit and candy canes.
The reason was for the choking?
Well, we used to get all the smaller box candies wrapped, and that got to be very expensive.
Okay.
And cold, we used to get it through Kohl's, pretty discounted rate, and we can't do that anymore. Kind of by the wayside.
Half the kids couldn't eat it because it was too small a joke.
Yeah, I thought the choking, our cancer.
We give away, we got fruit from the FFA and candy canes. Walmart easily donates, and that's what we give away.
That was a question asked, and I said, I will find out. So, thank you. Anything, questions for Chief? All right, Chief Torbit?
Just a quick update. Our Christmas for kids was a success. We had 74 kids that we served. I want to personally thank the Firemen's Association for being our fiscal agent, for all the money and all the work that Kevin Nelson did to wrangle up all the gift cards and keep everything tally, too. We appreciate that. We're still taking donations for next year. Our hope is to get 100 kids next year. I don't know how many. I think, I know all the law enforcement agencies in the county were here, and I think almost all the fire departments.
I think, yeah, I think the only ones with lions, but they had their parade going on at the same time.
Right, so, I mean, even, there was a couple of representatives from Lifelike that were, they came up to help as well. So I want to thank everyone for their donations and their time, and wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Did you guys get to view the video on the Wausau? Did you have it up? The Wausau PD had it up on their site. It was quite a parade. It's always a neat thing to see. Thank you both of you for doing that. All right, Dennis here.
Okay, the water treatment plant operator training position, civil service met approved the structured interview format the last day for applications is currently this Thursday, although results have been meager. So we may consider extending that. John Arps and Lou Turo and myself had a meeting with Arcadis about bringing together our asset management plan for the water system. That's nearing completion. Jamie was also in on that. There's some stuff she needs to provide for that as well. On the 7th of December, we had our chemical bid opening annual event. All the chemicals that get used for the water and wastewater treatment plants are bid out once a year at this time. We've gone through all of those, and all of them have been awarded. So we're in the process of doing the contract dance with, with the successful companies. Obviously, a lot of work and time and the budget and budget hearing. And Merry Christmas to one and all.
Questions for Dennis?
I got one question for actually both chiefs and Dennis. With the catastrophe that happened in Blissfield with our fire department, is the city buildings, fire department and all the buildings safeguarded through Chief Torbit's? So if we do have a fire somewhere or a problem, that we can get to it quicker than Blissfield was able to get to theirs or not? I don't know. I don't know what the situation in Blissfield was. However, our apparatus base in that area is not protected by an alarm system nor sprinkler system. And that's what I'm wondering, whether, like, the public works area, do we have cameras? Do we have any fire alarms anywhere that would work out?
No, the building is alarmed. We have cameras on the entire building, and those are monitored 24/7. I don't believe Blissfield's was.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just using their problem to kind of help us out so we don't have a situation at it.
We have a lockdown system here, though, with our building, correct?
So I know everything's...
And cameras.
To your office, chief?
Right.
So I didn't know if everything's hooked together, so, so we can get there quicker than, I mean, they was able to not get there as soon as they should have.
Well, we have people here 24 hours a day, too.
Yeah, right. I just thought I'd ask, and rather than ask, I talked to the chief a little bit, but since you guys are all here, I just wanted to use the opportunity to ask so we can make sure that we're all on a good page of safety. Okay, thank you.
Have you ever toured this building?
No.
The other building? Maybe. That would be very beneficial for anybody else that wants to. I think we did it a few years ago with your council members. I think Scott, didn't you go on that, or you went out to the, the, all of the departments and kind of see what, what they all entail and do? But it would be nice if you guys would want to do that, maybe after the first of the year and stuff.
I knew that a lot of the camera systems goes back to Chief Torbit's office or dispatch, but...
The whole building is, is, the whole building has cameras.
And I just wanted to see if, because they got a real problem up there. That could have been maybe handled quicker if we had some.
That's why we keep going for the grants?
Yeah, exactly. I'm, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mary.
No, that's good questions. Okay. Any other questions for Chief? Or Dennis? Moving on to Jamie?
First of all, I'd like to point out in the new business section, there is a motion to transfer funds from the debt charge fund to the wastewater fund. We, I need to table that for now. I'm not sure that a motion is the appropriate thing to do for this, and I'm waiting to hear from our other council to get a, to get the correct answer there.
Be under 12.
So be, no, table?
So it might come back up at the special council meeting when we look at the 2019 budget. as well as the 2018 adjustment that I'll have to do at the special council or the special meeting. Hopefully, we will get through our contract negotiations tomorrow and we'll be able to schedule that. I don't know, you're probably keeping your fingers crossed and you feel that we can come to an agreement tomorrow. Also, on Thursday, I have scheduled open enrollment for health insurance. We have two times scheduled at 5:30 and at 1:30. Hopefully, we can get the majority of our employees in on this day. I know it's the holiday time. But then our enrollment forms will redo that on next Thursday, the 27th, so I can get those in before the end of the year. That's all I have tonight, unless you have questions.
We are preparing for negotiations tomorrow with the OPBA and the three police unions, looking forward to that. And hopefully we can get issues resolved and move forward. Other than that, that's been the primary focus these last few days, reviewing some contracts. I need to, Rick, haven't forgotten you on your contract piece, I'll get that looked at. Other than that, I guess that's all I have to report. If there's questions?
Tom's going to be leaving early, so if there's any questions throughout the agenda, if you have him now, probably would be a good time because he's got to leave. Okay?
Thank you.
Your excuse?
Thank you.
All right, move on to first reading of legislation, ordinance 2018-16. An ordinance to approve and enact the 2018 replacement pages to the codified ordinances to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency. Everybody puts in their pages.
I'd make a motion to declare an emergency on ordinance 2018-16.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2018-16 on emergency moved by Councilor Chamberlain and seconded by Council President Steritz. Is there any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
And Council Snyder?
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
I'll move for the final reading. I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2018-16 on final read moved by Council Fry and seconded by Council Snyder. Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Council Steritz.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Resolution 2018-32 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Perito?
Burrito.
Burrito, thank you. Captive Services LLC, Sunlight Financial and Mutual Health Services for the provision of health insurance for 2019 and declaring an emergency.
I would make that motion.
Always heard it as cashmere.
Motion to place resolution 2018-32 on emergency moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Steritz. Is there any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
And Council Fry?
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final reading? Second.
Motion to place resolution 2018-32 on final reading moved by Council Snyder and seconded by Council Fry. Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
And Council President Steritz.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Resolution 2018-34, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to provide for one half of the dental insurance premiums for full-time, non-union city employees and declared an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Motion to place resolution 2018-34 on emergency moved by Council Fry and seconded by Council Stickley. Is there any discussion? Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
And Council Snyder.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
What you moving on? On a final?
Yeah, final.
We can second.
I thought I should have said something.
You second that?
Motion to place resolution 2018-34 on final meeting moved by Council Steritz and seconded by Council Stickley. Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Sure.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
And Council Snyder.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
We have nothing under second reading, so we'll move on to third. Resolution 2018-30, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for countywide emergency agency and declaring an emergency.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2018-30 on emergency moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Steritz. Is there any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Council Snyder.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final reading? Second.
Motion to place resolution 2018-30 on final read moved by Council Snyder and seconded by Council Stickley. Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
And Council President Steritz.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
New business, we're going to have, need a motion to authorize the Director of Finance to pay bills to December 31st, 2018.
I would make that motion.
I'll second the bill idea.
Motion to authorize the Director of Finance to pay the bills through December 31st, 2018 moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Chamberlain. Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Steritz?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Council President Steritz?
Yes.
And Council Snyder.
Yes.
Sixty A's, zero N's, motion carries.
And we are tabling the B section of under number 12, new business. So I guess I would like to wish council and all of my administrations that it was on a very Merry Christmas and a very safe, safe New Year. So, moving on with that, I would like to see if we can get a motion to approve the bills.
I'd also move that. Second that.
Motion to approve to pay the bills was presented, moved by Council Snyder and seconded by Council Stickley. Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain? Council Chamberlain?